...meeting of the Reno County Commission to Order Please. First order of business today is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the phone with us today, we have Ron Tyker, a pastor at Countryside Baptist Church. Ron, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, Ron, please go ahead.
Let's pray. I, God, we come before you this morning recognizing our need for you. In difficult times and difficult times, in God, we, first of all, we ask you for your wisdom, Lord, in decisions that are made and in the words that are spoken, Father God, that you would fill us with wisdom. Second, Lord, we pray for your peace. God, that you surround us. You're called, Lord Jesus, you're called the Prince of Peace, and so we pray for your peace. And, Father God, we ask, third, for your leadership, Lord, that you would show us the direction to go and fill us with the wisdom and understanding to follow the best course. And so, God, I pray for these leaders and I pray for those in attendance, that your presence will be felt and that your direction will be present as we invite you to be large and in charge in these meetings. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ron, very much for being with us today. Let me turn my phone off because, if you'll recall, I got in trouble with that a few weeks ago.
Thanks for reminding me.
Slow learner, but I can learn. Okay, from the chair this morning, we have two items. Our first is a very important item, is recognition of Bill Hermes, our Youth Services Director, on his retirement. I'll turn this over to Randy to visit about this, please. Here's Bill.
Okay, and Bill is here, yeah. I'll read kind of the background that was in the agenda packages so the public can hear. Bill Hermes began his career in Reno County in 1989 as the Assistant Director of Youth Services and has been the Director since 1992. Prior to working for Reno County, he was the Death, Dying and Bereavement Counselor for Hospice of Reno County. Bill credits his years of success to surrounding himself with many great people. In his years as Director, he hired and retained 42 employees that have accumulated over 600 years of experience. Bill said, "I will be leaving the Department of Youth Services in very capable hands. I have spent the past several years training and assigning people to the right positions to carry on the successful legacy of the department." And I had a quote in here that says, "Bill has been a great leader for Reno County and made Youth Services a model department for others in the state of Kansas. Bill's leadership, along with that of his staff, have made positive changes to the lives of the youth that have been served at the detention center and the shelter." Bill attended Hutchinson Community College and Foray State University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in sociology and a minor in psychology. He then attained a master's in counseling from Foray State University. So, and there is a public reception tomorrow, December 23rd, down in the Veterans Room, and I believe it's 1:00, 1 to 5, or, yes. So, I'd like to let Bill come in and talk, but congratulations on your retirement, Bill.
As someone who was born and raised in Reno County and pretty much raised in rural Reno County, I want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this board, the past boards, so county commissioners, the residents of Reno County, and the employees of the Department as their Director of Youth Services. And I want you to know that all the years, through all the years, I've never taken the responsibility or the magnitude of the job as something that's to be taken lightly. Every day when I drove to work, I prayed that my decisions, which I knew affected not only the employees of the Department, but all the kids that we helped, I prayed that those were the right decisions. And the many successes that the Department of Youth Services has seen over the years, I attribute to many different things. One of them is the support that I received from the Board, the support that the Department received from the county administrators, the support and loyalty that I received from all the employees through the years, and mostly the grace of God. My mom had always taught me that any successes you receive are through the grace of God. And so, I want to publicly thank him for that. Through all those successes, I would be remiss if I did not speak briefly about the darkest day that I had through the last 31 years, and that was April 28th of 2001. And that was when we had a youth in our detention facility that hung himself from the hinges on the back door of a cell door. And even with the heroic efforts of the employees, he left the facility with a heartbeat but wasn't breathing, and 21 days later, he died. And from that time on, and I told the administrative staff last week, and I didn't think they knew it, but I've kept his file in the safe behind my desk to constantly remind me of the weight that is on the person and persons that are in that department. There are many kids there, many kids that are troubled kids, but also many kids that are in troubled situations. And so, I would remind people in Reno County, the citizens of Reno County, that there is help needed there. You know, I come before this board every year to defend the budget, and sometimes when I read obituaries, I see that the memorials are going to the animal shelter or some other places, and I want people to realize you can designate the Bob Johnson Youth Shelter as a recipient of those memorials because it is needed, and we are touching thousands of lives. I looked back just over the years that I've been at Youth Services, the number of shelter admissions has been over 13,700. The number of detention admissions has been over 14,000, and the number of kids that come through the intake and assessment department has been over 22,000. So, that is a lot. And so, we're definitely touching lives there, and I want everybody to understand that the employees there are what makes it great. And as I've said many times before this board, I'm only as good as the people I surround myself with. And I've been very, very lucky to have people that have chosen to work over there as their mission in life and stuck with it, even through the most difficult times of them having kids cuss them out and lay everything out possible and threatening their families and everything else, and they still come to work the next day. I have to let you know that my wife has never been a big supporter of me being in the administration of the Youth Services Department. And it was about three months after I was hired on, we were finally in the new building, and I was out with my wife and my parents, out eating, and got paged that they had trouble with a kid in the detention, so I drove in with my wife, and she sat in the control booth, and this kid had actually broken one of the windows out of the cells. And that was when we were discovering that the building wasn't built to be a detention facility, we had to do some rebuilding. But with that, we moved this child into a different room, and I went after we handcuffed him, and I sat on the edge of the bed and spoke with him. He was very angry with me. And Shelley Brettemeyer was with me at that time, and my wife was listening on the intercom in the control booth, and this kid spit in my face several times. And Shelley and I had just been to a training on dealing with kids that are out of control and restraint and everything, and I knew that if I responded to that of him spitting in my face, then that was the reaction that he wanted to get from me. And so, I didn't react, and so I continued to talk with him. And after several minutes, Shelley stepped out of the room and comes back with a Kleenex and interrupts me and says, "Bill, will you please wipe your face off?" So, I just wanted to say that and let my wife know that she's finally got her wish. I am no longer going to work for Youth Services, but it has been, like I said, an honor and a privilege. Just a few numbers. Went back and counted up the number of employees that we went through in Youth Services from the time I started there, and it's been 389. I estimated that I've signed my name over 90,000 times. My average is walking over to this courthouse to this floor three times a week. That equals almost 800 miles of walking. I've been through 74 different department heads and elected officials in those 28 years that I've been there, three county administrators and 15 county commissioners. But like I said, it's been an honor, and I'm very certain that the people that are staying there will do an excellent job, and I will continue to pray for their success. Thank you.
Bill, why don't you do a picture? Sure. Bill, on behalf of the County Commission, I'd like to thank you for your service, starting in 1989 and being the Director of Youth Services, quite a career. I've got to know you the last two years, and I've seen nothing but your work as being very, very professional every time you've come before us and all. I also want to appreciate you being willing to be the interim county administrator for three or four months last year, and it was a very important time, and you did an excellent job. And I want to congratulate you on your career and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, Bill, for offering a new Commissioner a tour of the facility. And I would say that it's a must for any Commissioner that takes on the tour of that Bob Johnson Youth Facility to fully understand the importance and of not only having it here in Reno County, but the importance of the personnel that go along with it.
Thank you.
You want a picture? Better have him there. Everybody up there.
Better put this on Facebook now so you're a good friend in Kansas City. Our good friend in Kansas City.
Oh, see that, okay, all right. Boy, she's only been here a couple of months and telling us what to do.
I know, I can think of it.
Thank you, thank you very much, Bill.
It's very meaningful to have employees that have enough time and have the degree of professionalism. Reno County has a great many very, very qualified employees, but we need to appreciate each one of them. Okay, my second item this morning. In an attempt to move this meeting along, feeling that any speaker cannot add much to anything that has already been said for several months on the Mass No Month subject, I hereby make a motion that each public speaker this AM will be allowed not to exceed two minutes of public commission time. And in addition, since there might be commissioned motion or motions on the health COVID subject, that any final discussion or motions on this subject will be made immediately after the public comment segment of the meeting. After the decisions of any possible motions, including discussion, if any, no more agenda debate will occur this date on health COVID subjects. That's a motion, and in order for it to be effective, I need a second. I will second the motion.
Can I ask for clarification?
The clarification is that I think that through the-
Well, I have a specific question, if you don't-
Okay, sir.
On the, on the, with the public speakers, that means everybody who's going to come up, that's going to include Dr. Polly, right?
I think Dr. Polly is part of the health group that works with the, with the county, so I would not think it would include her.
You're putting no limit on him.
I think he'll try to be as brief as possible. Hope you would be. We'd like to move this along. I feel like that the Commission has listened every week to both pros and cons of this subject. Each of the Commissioners has been written hundreds of emails, pros and cons on this subject, and I question how much further information can be arrived on this subject, and that's why I made my motion, and it has a second. Is there more clarification you'd like to have? The reason I felt like it deserved a second was because that we have public-
Please get closer to it if you could.
Okay.
That's better.
Reason I put a second on this was because the public comments section is for items not on the agenda, and I think this Commission is giving a pretty good procedure to people even when it's on the agenda to allow public comments. And we've talked about this before, that we need to hear some of the public as much as possible. The one thing I would say is, is when that time comes, and if somebody's already said something, as we've done before, and you agree with it, just come up and say, "We agree with so-and-so." That'll let more people have time to come in and speak.
Do we need a vote on that?
You made a motion, and we have a second, we need a vote.
Please call the robe.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Stephan?
Respectfully, no.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Okay, at this point in time, according to the agenda, we'll have our COVID-19 update, first by the Emergency Management Director. Adam, would you come forward and present, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weiss, our Emergency Management Director. I have a map I'm going to pass out to each one of you. It's county disaster declarations across the state and when they expire.
So, he's already studying what you gave us. Didn't pay attention.
So, back on March 19th, the Board of County Commissioners, I'm sorry, Commissioners, back on March 19th, the Board of County Commissioners declared a public health emergency, and that was extended until the 31st of December of this year. I came to you last week and asked you, or talked about extending this further and what that looked like. At the request of the Commission, I had prepared an email that went out to all the Commissioners last week that outlined the process for disaster declaration in the county, the statutes that are around the 1975 Kansas Legislative Act, that govern emergency management, and then additionally, what it looks like locally for us, and the reimbursement, the FEMA dollars and all that stuff. I'm here today to clarify any questions you might have, present this map. If you look at the map, it's, every Kansas county is on there. There's 104 active disaster declarations in place out of the 105 counties in Kansas. The only county in Kansas that does not have an active disaster declaration in place is Chautauqua County, and that's outlined by white down there in the southeast portion of Kansas. The blue ones are active disaster declarations in place, but they have an expiration date on them. There's 21 of those counties that have a date on there of when they'll expire, and then the other 83 counties in Kansas are, have one in place until it's rescinded. So, that means that the Board of County Commissioners says we're in an active state of disaster until they decide that we're not. So, my question for the Commission today is, where would you like to see a disaster declaration? Is that something you're going to support moving forward? And if so, do you want an expiration date on there, or do you want it open until rescinded? And the goal will be to put together a document with Mr. O'Sullivan and get that in front of the Commission next week.
I'll just speak for myself and ask the other Commissioners to react to your question. I would like to see that on the agenda next week. I guess I would prefer that it have a drop-dead date. I think until rescinded is, could be not in the best interest, so I am just throwing out a deal of 3/15/2021, but I'm negotiable on that. But I don't think we should enact an order that it is active until rescinded. Commissioner Hurst?
Would you consider 3/31?
Yes, I have, or even 3/30. I, 3/31 is fine. Commissioner Stephan?
I think you're spot on. 15 days either way, a month either ways, fine with me. But I do like the concept that it is looked at.
Absolutely.
I firmly agree. I think we're all three in agreement of that, of you've got to come back and tell us why we need to extend it again at the end of March. Does that give you the information you need, Adam?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners. Anything else that I would have for you this morning, I'm sure it'll get covered by someone else today, so I'll keep it brief for you, and I'll send you that document hopefully later today or tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Hammersmith, interim Health Officer.
Thank you.
Good morning. Just giving you the total cases of COVID as of now for Reno County, we've had 6,269 cases. We have total active cases of 693. We have total community active cases of 683 that is without, without any inmates. The 14-day positive test rate as of 12/13 is at 50.1%. The 14-day new case count is at 935. We have had 88 total deaths, and 30, in the last 30 days, we've had 45. Pfizer vaccine received emergency use authorization on December the 12th, and Moderna vaccine received the emergency use authorization approval on 12/18. Yesterday, we got 200 doses of the Moderna vaccine into the Reno County Health Department, and we are working with partners in the community to immunize all the frontline employees that would like to receive it. We will follow the guidelines from the Kansas COVID-19 vaccination plan and getting that out to the frontline workers first. We already started yesterday afternoon by vaccinating Reno County health staff, which is part of what KDHE has directed us to do, is to vaccinate anyone at the Reno County Health Department and EMS with our doses. And then we're working with the community medical area that, getting all those frontline workers vaccinated as well. As far as Reno County, total hospitalizations during this pandemic has been 282. ICU admissions have been 89, and total intubated have been 30. The Hutch Regional Medical Center spoke with us this morning. They have 29 patients in the hospital right now. Three of them are intubated and 20 are in critical care. Dr. Sork, who is a pulmonologist at the Hutchinson Clinic, also was not able to be here today. He is working on the front lines, he's on call, and so he gave me a letter, which I will read. This is from Dr. Sork. "Good morning. I apologize for not attending in person today to present my thoughts on the coronavirus pandemic, but I am on call at the hospital and caring for our pulmonary service. This is my 40th winter as a pulmonary physician. I have cared for physicians with various infectious diseases and provided care throughout several flu epidemics. I have seen a lot of tragedy in my professional career, and I assure you that this coronavirus pandemic is unprecedented during my practice of medicine. This pandemic has been ongoing for nine months and shows no signs of dissipating. Coronavirus is a serial killer. This virus does not discriminate because of race, religion, political affiliation, or social status. It can devastate the old and those with pre-existing conditions such as diabetes and hypertension. When a person is infected, their symptoms might range from no symptoms to progressive pneumonia and death. This infection also causes people to die from or experience other medical conditions such as renal failure, heart attacks, pulmonary embolism, and strokes. In Reno County, 47 people have died of coronavirus in the last month alone. Percentages regarding infection or survival rates do not matter because of all those individuals are 100% dead. We can't forget that many people have lost spouses, parents, children, and close friends in the last nine months. We have multiple other patients that are currently hospitalized and trying to recover. Some treatments have been developed that are helpful in managing symptoms, but largely we support patients and hope for the best. Once hospitalized, the virus slowly inflames individuals' lungs, and they need progressively more oxygen. Finally, they go on a ventilator with only about a 15% survival rate. As patients worsen, they know what's coming. Every day, they want to know how close they are to the ventilator because they realize that means their chances of survival are slim. I particularly remember a 54-year-old man who, after discussing the fact that he would need to go on the ventilator, grabbed my hand and asked me to please not let him die. He did. I have this conversation too many times over the past several months. Individuals can go to work on Friday and be dead on Sunday. Even when patients recover, some will have permanent scarring of their lungs, some will remain on dialysis, most will have some sort of trauma associated with this infection. It is clear that this virus spreads by airborne droplets. When we breathe and talk, we produce droplets, and when we laugh, speak loudly, or sing, the number of droplets increases considerably. As a droplet travels away from the mouse, it dries and becomes smaller. Small droplets are more likely to be inhaled and cause infection. Masks and face coverings decrease infection rates because they create barriers between individuals. All people who are wearing masks decrease their likelihood of becoming infected, but it is much more important for the person infected with virus to wear a mask because they are more likely to spread it to those that are around, and the mask is more effective at filtering large droplets. In my practice of medicine, I frequently make decisions that potentially affect the life of my patients. I am intensely aware that healthcare practitioners make every effort to preserve life. Today, you are going to make a decision that will affect the lives of the people of Reno County. Residents of the county expect to be safe on the roads from reckless or impaired drivers, at work, at a restaurant, or at school. The decision you make today will impact individuals that are currently healthy and functioning well in everyday life. I request you reaffirm the mask mandate and the restriction on gathering size. This is the absolute minimum to ensure public health. My colleagues in healthcare want to partner with our local government to make our county safer. Take advantage of our expertise as you make your decision. Remember this decision affects the health and welfare of our county. This is the burden and the responsibility you carry as Commissioners. Thank you. Robert L. Sork. So, with that, I want to go ahead and introduce Dr. Polly, who is our consultant for the Reno County Health Department.
I do want to make a quick comment in regards to that letter. You know, Dr. Sork's a fine pulmonologist, and he's anchored in, in the worst place of the worst places to be a part of this, there's no question about it. But it, and it very much jades his view on this. You know, our Reno County Citizens for Transparency just put this together, looking at masks in all 50 states, from May 1st to December the 15th, all 50 states, compared those with statewide mask mandates and states without statewide mask mandates. No mask mandate states had 17 cases per 100. No mask mandate states had 17 cases per 100,000 people. Those with mask mandates had 27 cases per 100,000 people. So you know, y'all can wish till the cows come home for those masks to make a big difference in society, but they just don't. So you know, again, you know, I'm against this fear campaign that's being ran by the Kelly administration, by you and the Health Department, through the hospital and through the chamber. You know, this is, you're not helping the situation with the fear campaign. Let's talk, let's discuss things rationally. But just launching into a letter to create fear, we're not going to move through this. This is, this represents what's wrong with our response, is it's purely fear-based.
Thank you, Commissioner Stefan, for your response to Karen there. I think a little later on, you'll have all the time you want to make your case today. I think Karen has introduced.
One question. Karen, I received an email from a senior care worker inquiring about the procedure and how vaccines were going to be handled. So I just, I just emailed her back and said to contact you. So I added one more thing for you to do. So she just contacted you to find that information out because I said you getting information on a limited basis anyway. So anyway, just want to let you know that.
Not a problem. We'd be happy to answer those questions.
Before Dr. Polly comes up, I guess I'd like to expand on Commissioner Hirst's question. I've had a couple emails from people in the nursing area that wonder when their group is going to get vaccines. And I guess I'd like to have a better understanding of, is it the hospital that's deciding this order? Is it the Health Department? Is it a group? And whoever this group is that you're going to name, I really want them to be transparent and tell the people exactly where we are on vaccination, whether it's still the doctors in the hospital, whether it's the nurses in the hospital. I would very much like something sent to the media every day or every couple of days of what group of the population is the next in line, because I think it's so important that people know where their order is. Does that make sense, Karen?
Yeah, absolutely. We can certainly work with that. We're working with the collaboration with the hospital, Prairie Star, the summit, the Hutch Clinic has all been, and obviously the Health Department, working on vaccines and getting that out. So we have no problem when we can certainly push that out through all the entities, through social media.
News release every couple of days about what the next group and where we're at in this. I think people would very, very much like that information and.
It may not come every day because truly, we're just waiting on vaccine to get in.
But you can tell us where you're at.
Where it's going.
Where you're at, where you're going. And I think this chart here that you handed out gives some expectations, but at least here on the chart that you handed out, there's four boxes here, so we need to at least know where you're at on these boxes.
And where you've been with it and where you're going next with it.
So the hospital has their vaccine in, and they shared some of that with the frontline workers, so Hutch Clinic's physicians that are working frontline, and also the hospital staff. And then we got our 200 doses in yesterday.
That's what I want the public to know.
If that's an opportunity that you can work with our marketing department to take some, some extra time off of your hands, why, please work something out with them.
We have already been in contact with Lori Moody, yes.
Okay. Dr. Polly, please. And as we're trying to move this segment of our agenda along as brief as possible, please.
I'll keep it quick in less than the five minutes unless there's questions, which I can't control the timeframe on answering those. But update on trends, caution, but also some thank you. Thank you to those supporting businesses and schools by masking, practicing safe social distancing, and getting tested. This has saved lives and avoided dreaded lockdowns. Immunizations are arriving, but we can't relax on those measures at this point. In regard to the Reno County Health Department Director, staff, epidemiologic and analytic teams, thank you. Their integrity, professionalism, and dedication to doing what is right is above all. They're amazing people. They are the epitome of what a true Kansan and Reno County citizen should be. Anyone stating otherwise should take a hard look in the mirror. Thank you to those caring for the members of our community who are ill with this, especially our ICU and ward nurses and respiratory therapists. They go into battle every day. I'm so happy they've been able to get their first dose of immunization. Again, this is the beginning of the end, not the end of the end. And also thank you to those families who have lost loved ones. If I finish early with this, I don't think we'd have time, but I'd love to have 88 seconds of silence at this or the end of this meeting to honor those that we've lost and thank you to those families who've been strong. These ones we have lost are all fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, sons, daughters. They are real people. They are not numbers. Trends outpatient. Recent decrease in symptomatic presentations over the last week or two, largely attributable to the above numbers, excuse me, the above measures of mitigation. The percent COVID positive is still astronomically high, though. This is more reflection of us not seeing other viruses circulating in the community. So our overall number of presentations has decreased slightly, which we hope that the hospital will see that or is seeing that a week or two after the fact. But again, the percent of those that are COVID are near 50%. So if you're ill with any sort of symptom, whether it's upper respiratory diarrhea, that's where we're at, near 50%. The monoclonal antibodies appear to be more beneficial than I had originally even anticipated. This is emergency use authorization infusion that we give to those who meet certain criteria, showing that they are at higher risk for progression of disease or hospitalization. It is not intended for those who are already extremely sick. They're too far down the road towards hospitalization, so it's an early intervention. We have to be able to see them, diagnose them, see if they meet criteria, and diagnose them on the spot. It's not something we can wait for a one or two-day result. We are preferentially using a point-of-care test that gives us a 13-minute turnaround so that we can diagnose them and treat them. This is done in conjunction with outpatient settings in the hospital. These monoclonal antibodies, you'll recognize one named Remron or Regeneron. President Trump got that. The other one is Bamlamifumab. We have both of them here. Our sources are limited on what we receive from the state. So we're playing this game of balancing, getting people treated and not wanting this medicine on the shelf, but getting it into those who need it to help decrease the load on the hospital. It really seems like it's working, which means less hospitalizations, but we are doing ongoing studies because what I feel or think is different than what I know. That's what evidence-based medicine sounds like. If I come in here with some sort of confidence where I'm being bombastic, saying 100% this and that, that is not evidence-based medicine. That's typically narcissism or somebody trying to sell you snake oil. I'm not trying to do that. I'm cautiously optimistic. The numbers will show whether it works well or not. If the risks outweigh the benefits, the benefits are minimal as we do longitudinal studies, the emergency use authorization will be pulled and we will no longer be using it. But so far, it seems promising. Ongoing research regarding new therapeutics as well as repurposed therapeutics is underway. The medical community here is up to date on this, typically weeks prior to anything that the community or unfortunately you all here will read in your social media feed or on online news sites. I'm assuring you, we are up to date on this. We will keep you posted. When the benefits of something even early in studies appear to greatly outweigh the risks, that's when you see the emergency use authorization. Those medicines are still under study. So if we prescribe those or use them, we're hedging our bets. If something hasn't gotten emergency use authorization, I can tell you equivocally that the studies out there aren't enough to shift that benefit-risk balance in a way that we're reasonably comfortable prescribing that to the members of our community, our county, our state, because we're not test subjects, but we are in a pandemic. So we're walking this fine line. We will keep you posted. Caution. Recent studies, ongoing studies, show that relaxing our current measures, meaning testing, tracing, masking, will result in a rebound wave. This is well documented elsewhere around our country and internationally. Knowing the immunization is coming is not a reason to relax these measures. Knowing you may get it isn't any form of protection, but administration to a substantial percent of the population will be of benefit, but until we get to 65% plus, we won't be seeing an end to this pandemic in the form of herd immunity. There will be a progressive benefit as we move up through the ranks of 20, 30, 40, 50%. We'll first start seeing some falling off of hospitalizations, outpatient visits, but until you reach that 65, 70% range, the conversation of herd immunity isn't one that we can realistically have. Relaxing measures early will damage our economy and our children's education. I'll repeat, relaxing measures early will damage our economy and children's education because we will see a rebound, and then we'll all be behind the eight ball again. Regarding testing, ongoing investigations and interim clinical studies, meaning updates from our original March, April, May, June studies, shows that reverse transcript, transcript days, PCR, is even more accurate than we once thought. The early studies were done on concordance trials of known specimens with genetic material. Now we're having ongoing clinical studies in the inpatient-outpatient basis, which is, or the inpatient-outpatient venue, which is the ideal for this. Speaking of reverse transcript PCR, this is the way all testing's going. Gonorrhea, chlamydia, PCR. Point-of-care testing, in-hospital testing, is all going to PCR. Two, five years from now, you're going to see the majority of studies that I've done throughout my career being converted to a PCR platform. Ask any laboratoryian, clinical analytics person, anybody on the cusp of this research, the preponderance of evidence all shows we're moving that way. PCR is not new. It happens to be the very best test that we have for this. And not only that, it's the best test for other things. I need that known clearly to the community that these tests are as accurate as we can get, and they're way better than I even thought they were in May.
What do you base that statement on?
There are limitations to other studies.
Do you have any data? Did you bring anything to support your statements? I really, I'm just at my wits' end with hearing people with what I view as a political agenda walk up here with no data. Give me some studies.
If I'm still on the clock, the questions will make a difference.
Give me some studies. Please quit talking and pretending to know what you're talking about this stuff.
We have piles of studies.
Where are they?
I can show you.
Who are all the people you refer to?
These are all the IFUs. You can look at the IFUs on the emergency use authorizations, including the updated clinical stuff.
This is, your talk is propaganda.
Misrepresenting.
Okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Polly to quit on his statement today.
Wrap it up. This is total garbage. It's a disservice to the community. And the lack of early treatment, and you're writing it off as, oh, you're listening to the leaders, the academics, the liberals, who have these outpatient treatments shut down. You'll answer for that. You're not going to walk away from that. You will answer for that.
Commissioner Stefan, there's no sense being loud and argumentative in this commission.
Well, you're right. I apologize, but I'm at my wits' end with this nonsense.
I do have two studies I could cite if you wish me to.
I would, I would like you to send the studies that you're referencing to, to the Commissioner Stefan.
I apologize to you, to the commissioners. My apologies.
This is a very intense subject, and we all get, we all get a little bit carried away.
I will say.
Do you have a final comment?
Yeah, I do.
Because I want to cut you off.
To make it easy and short, I will say two studies supporting both the things I said are cited in research that Mark Stefan has supporting other things. Unfortunately, he's picked and chose the ones he wants to represent.
Thank you very much, Dr. Polly.
I don't want to prolong it, but the other night on news, there was a retired admiral on there that's associated with the medical field that made a statement that he said, "We have plenty of antibody material to send out." So do you think maybe it's just not getting from the federal, down to the state, down to the local?
Is he referring to covalent plasma?
May have, yeah.
So covalent plasma, we're largely moving away from. So I'd have to see what he's referring to. That and a number of other things we can all see as far as the risk-benefit profile and the longitudinal studies. So I'd have to see, one, is it covalent plasma? That's what he's looking at. And then currently, that's not the top of our list as far as therapeutics.
Okay. I respectfully request that we move ahead. Thank you very much.
Disappointing.
Okay, at this point in time, thank you, Adam and Karen, for your reports. We have a doorkeeper out there, and we'll let the first person that wants to speak come in. Randy, would you check and see about how many people are going to be speaking, please?
Yeah, my sincere apologies, guys.
I understand your intensity on this subject. Yes, sir. You can speak on any subject for two minutes. Please state your name and address, and your time begins now.
My name is Richard Kramer. I reside at 600 East Avenue E. I'm a gun engraver by trade and scholar of the principles of liberty, self-government, history, the laws of nature and human nature and its responses. On November 4, 1775, Samuel Adams, in a letter to Dr. James Warren, wrote, "No people will tamely surrender their liberties, nor can any be easily subdued when knowledge is diffused and virtue is preserved. On the contrary, when people become universally ignorant and debauched in their manners, they will sink under their own weight without the aid of foreign invaders. Today, we are sinking under our own weight because of universal ignorance and our debauched manners, namely, we have lost so much knowledge from the age of enlightenment that we are wandering about looking for the principles of liberty and self-government. We no longer recognize the limitations of government and the limitations of the democratic process we utilize in our republic. We have become addicted to government handouts, which are nothing but money stolen out of the pockets of our fellow citizens under the label of taxes. Whether those handouts are the federal bribes, state bribes, local bribes, it matters not. Governments have no money except that which they have stolen out of the pockets of the citizens and used as bribes to compel compliance to edicts and mandates that violate the inherent natural and inalienable rights of the individual. This is the CARES Act. Federal bribes to entice governments to enact edicts that will violate the rights of the individual. How wicked, how evil. Where is the virtue? We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just power from the consent of the governed. You, the body of our county, neither need to opt in or opt out of the governor's mask mandate, because the executive has not the authority to impose such a mandate. She does not have the authority to impose such a mandate because the legislature has no authority to surrender their delegated authority.
Okay, Richard, please finish here. Two minutes is up.
And violate the separation of powers. The legislature does not have even the authority to create an emergency management act that will violate the separation of powers. You can choose to ignore such mandate under the home rule doctrine because, under the home rule doctrine, governance through the use of the democratic process is limited to the enumerated and codified rights of the individual. It is also a violation of the separation of powers for any court or judge to opine contrary to the codified and enumerated rights of the individual when an individual has not violated the life, liberty, and property of another.
Thank you, Richard, very much for being first.
Thank you. Commissioner, we have seven more.
Okay, thank you. I'll let him go a little longer as I try to... Yes, sir. Come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have two minutes to address the commission.
Hi, Jim Remar, 303 Kisselwall Parkway, here in Hutchinson, Kansas. I'm also the CEO of the Cosmosphere. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I thank you for all the work that you do. I'm here today to talk about how the health order and the mask mandate has had a positive impact on our operation. When the Cosmosphere closed its doors in March, the impact on the operation was devastating. As we reopened in May, my main priority was the health and the safety of my staff and of the patrons that come to the Cosmosphere. The local health order and state mask mandate provide us with the necessary guidelines, social distancing, capacity limits, PPE and masking, to ensure my staff is safe and that the Cosmosphere provides a safe and clean environment for its patrons. While our attendance is running below what it would traditionally be this time of year, we are running much higher than the national industry average. In part, this is due to the fact that Reno County does have a local health order, a state mask mandate, and that the Cosmosphere does provide a safe, clean environment for its patrons. As a business that relies on tourism to the county and on the public for admissions, it's imperative that those coming to Reno County know they it's imperative that those coming to Reno County know they are coming to a county that is safe, but more importantly, that cares. Over the seven months since we reopened, we have had visitors from over 25 states, and during that time, we've had only one complaint regarding masks. As a county, we need to continue to do what is working, requiring social distancing, PPE, capacity limits, and masking to keep the county open and the Cosmosphere open. A recent study conducted by Washburn University in St. Louis concluded that not only do masks help stop the spread of the virus, saving lives, masks help businesses by providing a safe environment.
Okay, Jim, your two minutes is up.
I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please, for the records.
Morning, everybody.
You have two minutes to address the commission, starting...
My name's Chuck Miller. I'm over 301 Hyde Park. I'm the executive director of the Fox Theater. I wouldn't be here if this wasn't a continual issue, but I do, I have this all written up. You have a lot of things to deal with today, but I just feel like this whole issue's been deregulated to the point where it's getting really, really out of control. I went through Katrina in New Orleans, and we had regulation, and we had people telling us what to do and when we could do it. Meddling about the $3 mask is absurd. I'm suffering with the effects of COVID still. It's opened up new issues in my being, and it's not real pleasing. You know, the CDC, the National Institute of Health, the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences are all supporting masks, even John Hopkins is. My business is frozen. A lot of other businesses are frozen around the state. If you continue to deregulate this, what we think would be a June opening will probably be June of the following year. You're risking the Fox, you're risking others' health, and with the vaccine so close at hand, I urge you to consider using all the tools in our toolkit and get this thing over with. I'm not well because of this disease, and I urge you to continue to do the right thing and support the masks.
Thank you, Chuck, very much for being here. Sorry for your illness. Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Please introduce yourself, name and address to the commission, and you have two minutes to make your statement to the commission.
Okay, thank you. I'm Robin Jackson, 3805 Quevera, here in Hutchinson. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am here to ask you to opt Reno County out of the governor's statewide mandate. Reno County and its citizens are sovereign people and should be free to make choices, assess our own risk, go or stay according to individual needs and circumstances. This state and her county have been under all encompassing health orders since, I believe, about July 4, and it requires a long list of do's and mostly don'ts, including the wearing of mask. For nearly six months, we have complied with these orders, and according to the KDHE and our local county health department, the virus continues to spread. I'm outraged. I'm not outraged because a virus is doing what a virus does serves. I'm outraged because of the following. My 93-year-old father-in-law in a local nursing home, whom we have not been able to see since February, is surrounded by masked caregivers. He got the virus. He survived, thank God, but they threw him into isolation and didn't bother to tell him why. My brother is also in a nursing home. I haven't seen him since February, supposedly to keep him safe from the virus, also surrounded by masked caregivers following every CDC protocol, and he got the virus. And he lay at desk door. They did nothing for him until I was able to send him a care package of vitamins and over-the-counter agents, and I can happily report that he's now recovered. Yes, these are personal anecdotal accounts. If you need more data, here it is. And this is from KDHE. Current health orders exempt long-term care centers, but they account for 35% of all this state's cluster cases and 90% of related cluster deaths. The health order picks on businesses like restaurants, but they account for 1% of cluster cases and to date, zero deaths in Kansas. Let me ask you this. Could the real question be not about wearing masks and the list that go on and on on the health order, but what about treatment being done at the very beginning of a COVID-19 diagnosis? Just heard Dr. Polly say something about it. Well, you know what, guys? It is high tide. From personal experience and firsthand stories of folks I know, it appears that the local protocol is to do nothing. What other disease has this kind of a response from the medical community?
Ms. Jackson?
Why are patients left to recover on their own? I mean, look, HCQ, I don't know, ivermectin, things that have been around a long time, but I'm still saying this, that early intervention would take the stress off of the hospitals and our healthcare workers. We cannot let people linger until they're so ill, they have to be, that it's required to hospitalized them. I'd like to suggest that rather than a mask mandate and some of these other so-called health orders, that what we really need to be mandating people is common sense, early treatment, and choices made by a free and independent people. And until that happens, I continue to be outraged with you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You know, while we're waiting, it just is boggles my mind that when I was trained to be a doctor, I was trained to be an independent thinker, you know, look at the data, sort through it, and do what was in people's best interest. And all of a sudden, with this virus, they've gone totally to protocols, and it allows very few people to top the opportunity to shut down treatment options and scares the local doctors out of using them. It's really been a bizarre situation.
Dr. Stefan, after a public comment, I'll give you and Commissioner Hurst all the time you want to speak on the subject. Yes, Mr. Wells?
Maybe I'll just cut mine down.
No, no. Please introduce yourself. You have two minutes, please.
Thank you, Ron. Brock Wells, 212 West Avenue B. I don't have much more to add because we have been giving a lot of data, and Dr. Stefan had already kind of presented the new article that came out just yesterday. This was a very well-done article showing that all 50 states, and they divided it into non-mandating masks and mandated masks, statewide mandates. And like he had already mentioned, you know, the mask mandate states had 27 cases per 100,000 per day, and the non-mandated masks had 17 cases per 100,000 per day. Or another way to say that, they had approximately 4 million more cases over the same amount of days. And remember, again, we had 35 active cases when Reno County opted into the mask mandate, and at our peak, we had a 4,300% increase in cases. We are continuing to go down even after Thanksgiving, which we are very thankful for, and that is following the gum pert function, which I explained last week. I was planning on reexplaining that again because it is a little complicated, but, you know, two minutes, you guys have that. And again, you know, the data is clear, and I don't want to minimize the severity of COVID-19 or minimize any of the deaths associated with it because it is real, obviously. But the government telling us what to do, the health orders that enter into place, they have economical and educational consequences that are not good. And again, you guys have seen the stats from Reno County on the suicide rates, suicide isolation and all that. The kids at school, they are not doing well with online learning. You know, I'm thankful for that school district my son's going to be going to, they're going to be going back to in-person starting January 5. But, you know, again, the mask mandates have done nothing, health policies have done nothing to stop the spread of this disease, one iota. And I will say this, you know, I definitely do appreciate, you know, our hospital, and I do appreciate the nurses that are working tirelessly for all this as well. And this, you know, what we are saying is nothing against them, okay? I appreciate it. Thank you.
You almost did two minutes, just about. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have two minutes to address the county commission.
Thank you, sir. My name is Daniel Wickie. I live at 1103 West 17th Avenue here in Hutchinson, Kansas, and I don't know what more to add to the mask mandate business than what Robin has come up here and spoke about, what Richard has spoken about. Commissioner Stefan has emailed me all the information I need, and I like how you refer to it as a fear campaign because that's all it is. All this is about is politics, money, and control, and I've had enough of it, and there's plenty of us here that have had enough of it. And it needs to stop, if for no other reason than for my grandchildren and all the children out there. These masks are proven to do more harm than good. Do your research. Turn off the mainstream media. Quit listening to the fear campaign. Do your research. When did we lose the ability to stop thinking for ourselves and use the common sense God gave us? We have an immune system. This virus is real. I will never deny that. It is no more real than the flu. We don't hear anything about the flu. What's going on here, people? It needs to stop. It needs to stop.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you for being brief. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. Ma'am, please come to the podium, introduce yourself, and you have two minutes to address the county commission today.
Good morning. I'm Aubrey Abbott Patterson. I'm the president and CEO of Hutchinson Community Foundation, and I would like to say that on behalf of the Community Foundation, we care about the health and safety of every person in Reno County, regardless of age or underlying conditions. We support the recommendations of our healthcare professionals and what they are asking us to do to slow the spread. They are the ones on the front lines, and they are the cutting edge of treatments because I believe that they, even more than all of us, want us to get beyond this crisis and see the end of it. The Community Foundation also supports people eating well and getting physical activity so that they are able to fight off a virus, this virus or any others. But what we know is that many people in our community do not have the same access to healthy lifestyles that the people in this room do. Long-term, we want everyone in Reno County to live a thriving and vibrant life. Short-term, we need to listen to our medical professionals and trust that they are doing everything within their power to help our people. I want to call your attention to an ad that was in today's Hutchinson News on page three. It's a full-page ad listing 96 businesses who also say they support our local medical professionals and want to do everything they can to slow the spread of this virus to, to protect our people. We each have to do our part. Would you like to give us to you and let me pass it around? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time. Anybody else? Yes, good morning. Please state your name and address, and you have two minutes to address the county commission this morning.
Okay. My name is Jonathan Garrett, and my address is 18519 West Blanchard Avenue, Ivyville, Kansas, 67510. And I just wanted to, I didn't really plan to speak today when I came, but I wanted to talk a little bit about liberty. I feel like the issue here, from my perspective, is not so much masks versus non-mask, but liberty. And I don't oppose anybody's right to wear a mask, but when it comes to me making choices for myself, I do believe that we should have the liberty to make our own decisions on those things. It was brought up earlier that by opening up the economy, that we would suffer economic issues, and I believe that's totally wrong. The destruction to our economy from this virus has been really great, and we look at other places like Sweden, South Dakota, and they have done just fine with their economy open. So I think it's flawed to say that by opening up that we would suffer economic problems. I also would like to say that our basic human rights are non-negotiable. The right to freedom and liberty can't be taken away even from elected representatives. Those rights are reserved to the people, and it's the right of being American, it's the right of being a human being. And I believe that we as citizens have the right and the duty to protect that, even if it means the alimony. We're supposed to stand for our rights. I believe that this virus was used to take down President Trump, and that is one reason, big reason, that I oppose all these mandates. I oppose the continuation of them. I think we were sold on this 15 days to slow the spread, and now it is almost 2021, and we're still doing the same stuff. So that's about all I have to say. I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you for keeping within your time.
I appreciate you having these open comment times to hear from the public, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. He was the last one.
He's the last one?
Last one signed up.
Okay. Per the motion that was approved at the start of the meeting, at this point in time, commissioners can discuss, I think on the table, there's the health order 20-05 and the governor's order 20-52. I'm sure both of you have things to say, so who would like to go first?
I'd be happy to. We're in a tough spot. None of us like this virus, none of them like the fallout of it.
Give me your microphone.
It's a brutal situation, and frankly, you know, we can battle this, this can be the hill we die on, or we can move forward. And, you know, kind of building off of what Commissioner Hurst said last week, what I think we need to consider doing is taking this health order number 2005, which frankly, I could sit here and just pick apart to death if I wanted to put that hat on, and I don't want to. I don't want to put that hat on. And we take that health order, that 2005 that's now in effect, as it's written, incorporate that into a, like your Reno County Resolution number 2020-17. I would ask that we delete whereas number six. And then when you get to the now and therefore is be it resolved, you delete number one and replace it with Reno County now has health order number 2005 in effect. That's the law, will be the law of Reno County. And with that, we opt out of executive order 20-68. And, you know, the health order number 20-05 has all sorts of mask language and is very problematic, but we've got to agree on something. And this, I think this is a very, very reasonable landing point to, again, basically create a new Reno County resolution, similar to 2020-17, that deletes whereas number six, deletes number one in the now there fours, and replaces it with some legal statement that we're using health order number 2005 as our standard operating behavior, and as such, we opt out of executive order number 2068. And with that, nobody gets everything they want, everybody gets a little bit of something. And with that, nobody gets everything they want, everybody gets a little bit of something, and we need to move down the road and conduct the business of the county and quit fighting over this nonstop.
Okay, I need to ask a question for clarification. Twenty-68, I thought the order that we're under for the governor is twenty-52, but I'm not sure what sixty-eight is, can you clarify?
Well, you know, I could certainly clarify that I may be wrong.
Okay, I'm going on something that the county counselor told me yesterday.
Okay, I thought the most recent executive order of what, November the ninth? There was one since then that really had to do with long-term care facilities. But whichever her most recent executive order that forced everybody to either...
It's extremely hard to follow, both, all, because there's things that apply to one, apply to the other one. I'm not even sure that Topeka understands what's fully in effect.
Would you like me to comment on the effect of 2068?
Yes, please.
Okay, I wish I had 2068 in front of me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Joe Sullivan, County Counselor, I had occasion to look at 2068 again recently with Adam Weishauer, and the operative provisions start on page three at paragraph one. And paragraph one said, well, actually, the operative paragraphs in which the governor's order entered are paragraphs two and three. Paragraph one begins the order by saying, "The provisions of paragraphs two through five do not apply in counties or municipalities that meet either of the following criteria." So paragraph one says, there's a subsection A and B, and the governor's order says that with respect to those counties, this Order 68 does not apply. And paragraph, sub-paragraph A says, "Counties in which Executive Order 2052 is in effect," meaning that the county commission has not exercised its authority under KSA 48-925 to opt out of Executive Order 2052. So I read that to mean that since Reno County did not opt out of Governor's Order 2052, it did on July the second with an Order Resolution 2020-17, which said that while it was, they thought the wearing of masks ought to be promoted and was a good thing, the order said, "The governor's mandate is not effective in Reno County." Two weeks later, approximately two weeks later, on July 14, after further consideration, input from the public, or whatever, the county adopted Resolution 2020-20, which repealed 20-17. So therefore, at the time 2068 was issued, Reno County had not opted out, or somebody might say that we'd opted back in. So I don't think that 2068, as written, applies to Reno County, and therefore 2052 does, to the extent that that is still in effect, and I have not heard anything definitive that 2052 is not in effect. So that's how I...
Okay, fair enough.
With that explanation, your comments then would refer to 2052?
Correct.
Okay, I'm very comp, too many documents.
Yeah.
Okay, we heard a comment, a statement by Commissioner Stefan wanting to delete one whereas and change paragraph one. My understanding is that if that is the approach that we take, that this document has to be written for our approval? And I'm just discussing, now, I'm not suggesting a pro or a con here.
Yes, if you're considering overriding either the Health Order of the local health officer or of the governor of the state of Kansas, your determination needs to be in right, your own order. And so I would think this would be discussion only, and if the consensus is reached, I can come back with such an order at the next meeting.
And you're comfortable that that's our only approach to do, as Commissioner Stefan is suggesting, and again, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with him, but I want to keep a orderly flow here.
If you want to take action, that's what it needs to be effective. I have no question in my mind. No one would know what you're ordering unless you did.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, do you have some comments this morning?
Yeah, I do. I've, we've heard a lot of people, we've gotten a lot of emails, several phone calls. I've stated this before, and this came from an old English teacher in high school, and I fully think she's right. My freedom ends where the other person's nose begins, and I don't think that always means just a fist. But like I said, I do appreciate all the emails and the phone calls I've received with your thoughts. Even though I may not have had enough time, and I'm sure, just like the rest of you, maybe I'm the only one, but haven't had time to personally respond to you via email, you have been heard. But when it comes to these decisions, that old adage, "The buck stops here," is just exactly right. And so I'm going to say my piece. I feel that some quotes in the paper, along with others, have assumed things based on my wanting to review the 2020, or 2020-04 Health Order and Mask Order. A review for commission knowledge after thirty days, I felt was necessary due to the many continual changes coming from CDC, KDHE, the governor, Dr. Fauci, and others higher up than this county commission and county health department. A review and opportunity for discussion was all that I wanted for continual knowledge as a county commission in order to have some responsibility for the health, welfare, and safety of our county citizens as directed. It seems that some people think that we, the county, are responsible for businesses' actions regarding their own business. It has also been widely reported that some people think it is their destiny, privilege, and right to harass, cuss, and belittle store clerks and owners just because the owners believe they want to care for their employees and customers to the best way they see fit. To those who fall in that harassment, cursing, and belittling store clerks and owners, shame on you and cut it out. I'm trying real hard not to use any other words for those type of people. Is this the way you want to be respected, show respect to one another, and want it shown to you? I doubt it. Everyone is trying to do their best way they can in this situation. Be courteous and helpful, not judgmental. If every one of us would show more of God's love and Bible instructions, this whole situation we'd be better off. If you citizens of the city want to make sure everyone is required to wear a mask within your city, then go to your mayor and city council representatives and demand that they pass an ordinance with fines for anybody that does not wear a mask while in the city and/or shopping with businesses located in your city. Those who I have heard from do not want this to happen. There are some cities that have done this, sure you've heard about them. I have heard from some who say they will go to other cities to shop if they don't have a mask order, and I've heard from others that says, "We will shop in other cities if they have the mask orders." Come on, people, neither one of you makes sense to me. To me, it sounds like a bunch of juveniles or kindergarteners fighting over a candy All of us are going to paddle our way through this COVID virus relatively soon. Those local businesses support many organizations that wouldn't make it without it, tech, Boys and Girls Club, 4-H, Cancer Society, and others. Hurt immunity is not a strategy, but part of a nature in dealing with a virus until a vaccine is available to the public. We can do what we have available to combat this fast spread by following our own county health directive. In my years of work in animal husbandry, I dealt with viruses, although they weren't We did things exactly similar to what health professions want us to do to handle this virus. We consulted a medical profession, followed his advice, provided a balanced diet. We take special care for those that we know or show that they may have some underlying conditions that increase the virility, is that correct word, of the virus? We practice environmental conditions that can decrease susceptibility. We isolated the sick ones. We continued to take temps. We became aware of signs of beginning illnesses. We treated the sick with proper medical procedures for secondary infections, and hope what we have done is enough so we don't lose any. I would prefer that this Health Order 2020-05 is amended, remains in place through January 26, so that we can review it on January 19, if it's so passed. Regarding other things, I'm fully committed to ask for a special commission meeting, should there be any move by the governor, any federal agency, or person to order a stay-at-home or shut business down, I think we've learned that lesson, including any nonessential businesses. That meeting would be for the sole purpose of opting out of any such order for Reno County, should they come down regarding shutting down businesses and/or stay-at-home orders. I want to give a little review now of what's happened in the past, I think County Counselor's already done it, but just for my view, is on July 2, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners adopted County Resolution 2020-17. That resolution opted out of the Governor's Order 2052, which mandated mask-wearing. Two weeks later, following considerable public input and reflection by the members of this commission, County Resolution 2020 was adopted on July 14. Resolution 2020-20 repealed the resolution by which the Reno County opted out of the governor's mask mandate, thus leaving a mask mandate in effect for Reno County. Given the considerable discussion which has taken place in these chambers over the last month regarding the recommendations from public and private health authorities that mask-wearing is a preventative measure for limiting the spread of COVID-19, and the opposition to these recommendations, I would offer two motions to the, one of them, the first one to be looked at, acted upon, to discuss, is I move that this board affirm Reno County Health Order 2020-05 as amended, issued on December 18, with a review on January 19, 2021, by the county commission, health officer, and health director. I would present that motion.
I think, before I can even consider your motion, I think I need to go back to Commissioner Stefan's comments, because I'm not sure he made a motion, but I think you were suggesting that that be a motion. Would that be correct, Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Would you please go over exactly what you were suggesting again, so that we've, which whereas, I've got that document in front of me, which whereas?
Give me a minute to get here.
Okay, look, grab 2005, Health Order 2005, and Reno County Resolution 2020-17. I would make a motion that we accept and support Health Order Number 20-05 as we create a new document slash resolution, similar to Reno County Resolution Number 2020-17, that would delete whereas number six, and delete number one in the now there fours, replacing the number one with some sort of legal verbiage that states our acknowledgement, support for Health Order Number 20-05.
Okay, but I thought you went on to say that that verbiage would indicate not supporting Governor's Order 2052.
Right, right, exactly.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, no, because I think this does, regarding this, whereas number three, tell me if I'm wrong, it says, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners..." regarding, well, no, it doesn't. Yes, it would opt us out, the whole point of the new document slash resolution would be to opt us out of Executive Order 20-52.
Okay, so your intent here is for Joe to draft language for our consideration to opt out of 20-52 at this point?
Right, which is what I thought Reno County Resolution Number 2020-17 does.
It did, but it was repealed.
Right, but I'm just meaning as a template.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
But, but in the same token, the important part, let's not get hung up on, is the opting out. It's the, we've got, we've got Health Order 20-05 as the law of the land in its place. We're not, so we're not going naked, so to speak, we're just validating and getting behind together Health Order Number 20-05.
Okay, Commissioner Stefan has made that as a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm not sure I fully understand it, what you're trying to do yet, but I will second it, just to, so we can go forward with this.
Okay.
So you're leaving all the rest of the wheres in, is that correct?
Are we talking, I'm sorry, we talked interchangeably about an order affecting the governor's order 2020-52, and we also talked separately about an order affecting the local health officer's order 2005. So if you're talking about, at this point, are we talking about 2052, or are we talking about 2005? I think it helps me to know which one.
I think we're trying to define what Commissioner Stefan is wanting to amend on 20-05.
I see, I see a document that opts out of Executive Order 2052, and stating that the Health Order Number 20-05 is the rule of Reno County. That's what I see. I see, I don't see needing to do two documents, you could, but I think it's incredibly important that we don't sit here as a county with a, with a, with a health order that's only signed by, by health director. I think it needs to be backed by elected officials. And so I think, I see kind of bringing the two together as one document. Now, if you tell me it's better off not doing it that way, I'm certainly open to your thought what makes this cleanest legally.
Good, and let's talk about that, if I could. Let's talk about 2005.
Let's talk about 2005 and the format of the order. If the whereas sections are not part of the order, the whereas sections do not order anything. They are merely recitals of findings or conclusions that the health officer reached. If any one of those is in error, or that's still her opinion, but what's important about and what's legally effective about this order is the words that begin with "now therefore be it ordered" on page 2. Everything after that, except Paragraph 4, is part of the health officer's order. So when she makes a finding that 2052 is now in effect, she's just reciting that as what she believes to be a fact. She's not, and she has, by the way, she, the health officer in Reno County has never ordered the wearing of masks because the health officer believes that the Governor's Order in effect already did that, and it would be redundant and no reason for her to do that. So that specifically was the intent of 04 and of 05. So any order that you would enter, it seems to me, needs to take exception to anything that follows "now therefore be it ordered," except for Paragraph 5, which is a guidance and recommendation section and is not directing to anybody. It's a guidance and recommendations are made to businesses and it's directed to those people, and a portion of it says that...
Where are you at?
Okay, I'm sorry. Page 2, Paragraph 4, particularly Paragraph 4B, which I think is pertinent to what you're talking about. It concerns masks. It advises businesses to respect businesses and the public, respect businesses that are enforcing the Governor's mask mandate in their businesses. So that's her recommendation with reference to the Governor's Order, but it doesn't, it's not her own order with respect to that. So that is how we wrote that, and that's what we intended.
And I think everybody understands what the Health Order is and what it does and what it says. You know, I think the question at hand is, I feel like I'm getting it pretty clear. You know, I'm proposing that we use Health Order 2005 as the law of the land in Reno County, as such overriding Executive Order 20-52. It's that simple.
It doesn't do that.
It can do that, and you can create a document that does that.
You can do that, she can't do that.
I know, that's why we can create that document that refers back to Health Order 20-05, and we absolutely can do that.
No, I think that if you want to override Governor's Order 2052, adopt a resolution similar to 2017.
Okay.
If you want to override portions of the Health Order, adopt another resolution or order which specifies which sections of that order you would be deleting.
But that's the all of branch here, is we're going to leave Health Order 20-05 alone.
What portions of 2005 do you believe should be changed?
Like I said, the first was I was going to try to avoid that. We can go into that, and we're going to be here an hour, and we're just going to sow division. We're going to sow division if we get into that.
Okay, I think, well, there is a motion and a second, so...
Hey.
But I'm not for the direction that this motion is moving because I am supportive of Governor's Order 20-52, and the motion as it's made is basically suggesting that we would not comply with 2052, but go to the opt-out method, and I'm not for that.
I'm trying to follow, beginning to follow what county councilor said, if I think I am, is that if we want to make 2005 Reno County's law of the land, as you say, then we need to look at 2005 by itself. We need therefore to go back in and rescind Resolution 2020-20 to opt out. I think it needs to be two different things. And then, once you, if we agree to opt out, then we cover within the Health Order. Is that making sense or not?
I think from my standpoint, we're getting the whole contents of what we're trying to, even what Dr. Stefan is trying to do here today, totally muddled up in wherestas and therefor's, and I'm...
We inherited those.
Yeah.
Part of resolutions.
The... I think we need to vote on his motion to see if that motion carries, and then if it does, we're done. If it doesn't, we have further conversation this morning. Is there any?
I think it needs to be...
Is that okay? Okay, please call a roll. And the motion is to amend Health Order 20-05 by the Commission.
Well, no, let's...
There's some more to that, isn't there?
Did you write the motion down, as I said earlier? Were you able to do that? I can go, I can try to do it again. It's not that hard. Motion is to accept Health Order Number 20-05 as written and create, in the process...
And amend it to?
Basically, in another document, a document slash resolution that would opt us out of Executive Order 2052, delete Number 6 whereas in comparison to 2020-17, delete Number 1 in the now-there-for's, replacing it with an explanation that we are abiding by Health Order Number 20-05 as our code of conduct for all intents and purposes.
But the total intent of your motion is to opt us out of 20-52?
No, no, my total intent is to come up with something that gives everybody something and nobody everything. And Health Order-2005 is replete with mask verbiage and is incredibly problematic, and if we want to get to that, if we have to get to that, I'll go through it line by line and show you where all the problems with it are. But like I say, I'm willing to accept it as it is in, as our law of the land as we opt out of 2052, because we don't need two separate sets of mandates. We need one set of mandates, and our set of mandates would be Health Order Number 20-05, not Executive Order 20-52.
Then why not make a motion that says we opt out?
What's that?
Why not make a motion to rescind 2020 and go back to 2017?
Well, that's what I said, and that's what I've said. See, I don't think anybody's going to sit here and vote for opting out of 20-52 nakedly. I think they need to be combined, saying that we're going to, as we opt out of 2052 with a new document enforcing, codifying, standing behind Health Order Number 20-05. I think that creates an end total scenario that gives us all our mask verbiage, all our recommendations to our businesses. It gives us everything we need.
Well, but I believe we need the Governor's mask mandate of 2052. And so I'm against the motion because if you were to give me a document amending 20-05 with all the language that you want in there and all the language that you want deleted, I would be willing to at least look at it. But I'm very confused as far as what your motion is doing to 20-05, and that's why I'm not willing...
It's doing nothing to it. It's leaving it as is.
Well, but you're deleting certain things that pertain to...
No, I'm deleting out of Reno County Resolution Number 2020-17. That's the only deletion. Do you have that document? This is the one that originally opted out of 2052 back on July 2nd.
I understand that document.
We just delete 6, change that to a statement.
Oh, well, see, I wasn't even understanding that you were...
I wasn't either. I was trying to go back to 2005.
Yeah, I was trying to, I'm trying to, yeah, I should have brought you all copies of this.
See, I didn't even understand that you're talking about 2017.
Right, that was the original opt-out.
Okay. I understand that now.
So basically what we would do...
Why don't we get a copy so we can look at it?
What's that?
Why don't we get a copy of that?
Basically, you take 2005 and stick it right here, right here at Number 1. Delete this Number 1 and put, basically, it'd be 2005 would be sitting on Number 1 right there. It's a proof.
I'm against that motion. Is there any more discussion? Please call a roll.
I'd like to look at this first, if you don't mind.
Would you like to call a recess so that you can study it, or?
It's...
Is that 17? Is that true?
It's the first page. The only thing in this...
I think we can get it done shortly.
And it's a duplicate, it's on the other side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the sixth whereas, it's whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds that mask use is a fundamental health practice? Is that the one?
Yeah, I can't sign that because I know better than that. I know that is a false statement, so I can't sign that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification as I look through this. I'm sorry I didn't...
Well, I'm glad we talked more because candidly, Commissioner Stefan, I did not understand that you were referring to 2020-17 in any of your discussion there.
I'm sorry I didn't explain it better.
I was trying to go back to 2005 and find that.
Are you ready for the question, Commissioner Hurst?
Yes, sir. How's that?
Please call the roll. A yes would be agreeing with Commissioner Stefan, a no would be not to agree with his suggestion.
Commissioner Hurst?
No, I like where it's headed, but no.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
No. Okay. Are there other motions by the Commission to be made today?
Soon as I find it. Trying to shuffle through everything. I would move that the Board affirm Reno County Health Order 2020-05 as amended, as amended, and issued on December 18th, 2020, with a review on January 19th, 2021, by the County Commission Health Officer and Health Director.
There's a motion, I'll second that.
What's the point of that?
What's the point of that?
He's just saying that he affirms...
Well, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I agree with Health Order 2020-05 as amended.
What, okay, okay. So you're wanting to establish that the Commission supports that Health Order?
Yes. It's already in effect, but we've discussed it so many times with trying to change it and change everything, that I just, I felt it was important to affirm that today.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this motion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
No.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, is there any more motions to be made by either Commissioner?
So that motion established clearly for the record and for posterity who supports that, that Health Order 2005 and who doesn't. I think it's just as good a time, I'm going to make a motion that Reno County Commission opts out of Executive Order 20-52, just to put that on the record as well.
Okay, I'll second, put it on record.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion for this motion?
I have to have some trust in my medical institutions and medical doctors.
So the motion...
I don't necessarily like to have anything mandated to me. If I had a way to get away from this, I would like to do this, but at this time, I fully believe that even if there's only 5% or 10% chance that my mask will keep someone else who has an underlying condition or a friend of mine from, if I am contagious, from getting COVID, I have to believe that I'm doing the right thing.
Okay.
And I would put out there that you need to keep in mind that you're falling prey to propaganda, and there's just as...
I don't think so.
Let me finish my statement.
You can make a statement.
We had a little good discussion.
Yeah, yeah. And it's just as likely that as you wear that mask, tug on it, pull on it, if you're using it as a filter that catches some virus, you're getting it all over your hands, and you're spreading it all over the place, and you're giving it to other people who are susceptible that way. And time's going to prove that, and I hope you're around to get to see that and hear that, because you've fallen prey to a propaganda line, and the reality is going to prove that you're using that to catch it, you're touching it, you're then spreading it all over everywhere that way. And that's going to prove to be the reality. I have insight into this stuff. I have a lot of years of experience, and that is an anecdote, but don't sleep well at night thinking you're wearing a mask protecting others. That's garbage.
Okay, we understand what you're saying, we understand what Commissioner Hurst just said. I'd like to call for this question. The question is to opt out of 20-52. A yes would be that we opt out of the Governor's mandate, a no would be that we do not opt out of the Governor's mandate. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
No.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
No. Okay, is there any other motions that I don't want, we've been going a long time, but I think we want to make a statement on this issue. Is there any other Commissioner that wants to make a motion to be considered this morning on this item, because we'll leave it after we are done here. Okay? If not, I declare a five-minute recess. We'll start again at five minutes till 11:00. Okay, thank you. At this point in time, we'll reconvene the December 22nd meeting of the Reno County Commission. At this point in time, we determine any additions or revisions to the agenda. Either the Commissioners have additions?
I have none.
Okay. Does the County Administrator have an addition?
Yes, for part of the consent agenda with, to go along with Resolution 2020-44, which reappoints Scott Kippers, the district coroner, there's a professional... There's a professional services contract that Joe Solven had worked with Dr. Kipper on that just updates the contract. So I want that added to the consent to authorize the chair to sign if the resolution's passed.
And you've reviewed that and you feel that it's appropriate?
Yes.
Professional contract to go with that?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no additions, we'll move ahead. Well, there was an addition, so I guess we got to have the commission accept that addition. Is there a motion to accept that addition to the consent agenda?
So move.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, our consent agenda this morning is vouchers for the period of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, nineteen cents. C R F vouchers totaling one million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. A group of change orders, a Resolution dash forty-two establishing salaries for elected officials. A Resolution forty-three approving the rezoning request that we discussed last week. Resolution forty-four appointing Scott W. Kipper, M.D. as a district coroner effective January seventh for a term of one year.
It's four years.
Four years.
Yes, sir, that's by statute.
I am sorry for misreading that. And along with that, a professional contract that has been developed by county counselor and county administrator. Final item is authorization for the county administrator to sign supplementary engagement with Adams Brown for the Sparks Audit. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented and added to.
Is there a second? I will second that. Is there any discussion of any of these items by the commission?
You know, can I talk about?
Sure.
Item D?
Yes.
The salaries for elected officials.
Correct.
I have a little bit of hesitancy with that. You know, this is a tough year. It's an odd year. They are elected officials. You know, I did look up the Consumer Price Index. It's from November of nineteen, November of twenty. It increased one point two percent. I think it's a little, I think it's a little bold giving these elected officials a three percent cost of living increase, particularly this year.
Understood. Any comment by anybody else or county administrator? Would you like to address the question that Commissioner Stefan raises?
Yes, regarding salary increases, there's a resolution obviously thrown here for the elected officials. All the other appointed staff with the budget that was adopted for twenty-one have a step increase, which is equal to, I think it's right around three percent. So it'd be equivalent for the other staff members. So this is just lists the five electeds, but all the other staffs already have that in the budget.
Okay, thank you for that. I would have to share some of Commissioner Stefan's point of view with what occurred this year on cost of living and all. Our, our increase of three percent seems to be on the high side. We did give the other employees that and I guess my suggestion on this is to go ahead and approve this and keep in mind that for our budget of next year, that we keep in mind that we did be plenty generous in two thousand twenty-one salaries.
Two things I'd like to point out, oh, excuse me, is one, these three elected officials don't get the three percent raise.
That's correct.
So commissioners don't.
But, but this, these suggestions do give them that three percent.
Correct.
Yes, we have the opportunity, yeah. The other thing is, I think, didn't we discuss or pass a motion to look at, or maybe it's in that process, all of our salaries? And so I think that point, I agree with Dr. Stefan on that, that this being plenty generous, but that's following the budget process.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those and, oh, excuse me for that. I'm going back to youth or something here. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, our business items today are the two thousand twenty-one insurance renewal. I believe this will be presented by county administrator and Mr. Fee of Fee Insurance. Who's going to start on this?
I'll go ahead and just introduce. So you have in the agenda item, the summary, that Fee Insurance is our administrator of our insurance. This is for all insurance, not health, except health insurance. And I will comment that on the coverage, the twenty twenty-one premium is higher than the twenty twenty premium. But, and it's about four thousand dollars more than what we budgeted. To explain how that worked when we did the budget for, in twenty twenty with the amended budget, when we were uncertain about COVID and how it was going to impact our revenues, the commission asked for a million dollar decrease in budgets. Health, or this insurance was an easy one to also make an amended budget. We had already paid the full year, so we knew what to cut to. So the twenty twenty-one budget just took what we had amended the budget. Previous to that, for the twenty twenty budget, my understanding is the previous administrator had put a ten percent increase in, into the insurance. We didn't need that, so we cut back. So even though we're short about four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, we can find that in other line items. But that was because we amended the twenty twenty budget middle of the year and then twenty twenty-one's budget is identical to it. So then I'll let Bob explain the insurance.
Thank you, Randy, and Merry Christmas, commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here this morning. I wanted to point out one, one thing. We don't, we don't do the health insurance or the workers' compensation insurance. So it's just the property and the casualty lines of coverage. And as Randy pointed out, he laid this out very well in his white paper to you. Biggest areas that we have increases this year are not unusual to Reno County. We're seeing this across the board in multiple businesses. But property insurance continues to be a very hard marketplace in Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Colorado and other, other places in the Midwest. That's growing as a result of some reinsurance losses last year, the California fires, some hurricane issues, some storm issues across the Midwest have all caused the reinsurance marketplace, when it comes to property, to get very hard and not want to take much risk. The other line of, of coverage that you're seeing a pretty decent increase in is on your auto line. And we provided also kind of a summary loss, summary of where you, where you've been over the years. And those two lines of business, both property and auto, kind of, kind of weigh out in, in the losses that we've had as, from the county perspective. Last year, we had the earthquake loss that has been reserved and will be paid. Auto, the auto line continues to be a little bit of a, of a rough go. And then we did add some new, we had several new vehicles that were added to the, the list this year. Other than that, there were some slight increases, not a lot of major increases. Trending, I, I'm concerned about cyber. We added the cyber liability line about three or four years ago and really bumped it up. Cyber, we're seeing as a, in the insurance marketplace, is a very vulnerable area. And you don't have to look far. Our government has been hit. Our state Department of Labor was hit. Multiple places are being hit. And once, once you do have a breach, you do have responsibility. And that line of coverage, we think is going to continue to trend up. But it's an extremely important line of business and becoming more and more so as we go. We did, we met with, with Randy in August, I believe, and kind of went through where we saw rates going. And we did go out to Midwest Public Risk and had a discussion with them, submitted all of the county information. And I, I worked with the underwriter fairly extensively. He, he was pretty certain that he would be at about five hundred and twenty-five thousand for all lines. So, I mean, I didn't ask for a final proposal from him, knowing that they were going to be higher than travelers. He did have some stipulations that before he'd even provide a proposal, that the county would have to adhere to some, some new loss control measures. They wouldn't be bad necessarily, but Randy and I talked about it, perhaps something that we would look at next year and really take, take a hard look at. Not that that's going to bring costs down necessarily, but his, his words were, could stabilize things. So those were, that was pretty much what I've got. I'll see if anybody's got any questions.
On the, the cyber stuff, what, what does that really cover? What do they pay for on that? And I don't have much experience with that.
So cyber has got about twelve different lines within it that, that will pick up coverage. So it's got first-party coverage, which is you are damaged as a result of somebody getting into your system. Let's say that there is a lockdown on the systems of Reno County and you are asked to pay a ransom, basically, for those. There's coverage for that. There's forensics help with that. There's third-party coverage, which is the county gets breached and as a citizen of the county, my information is now exposed. So you've got liability exposure because I'm damaged as a result of that. So there's some liability coverage for that. There is data restoration coverage if, if the data is destroyed or manipulated in such a way that you need coverage for that. There are some public relations dollars that would be available to help with putting good news out about what's going on with the hack that, that occurred. The, the companies and travelers, and I will take my hats off to them. We had an earlier this year occurrence with another public, public entity. And Travelers was on the cyber and I got a, an email from Travelers, not to be resent to the insured, but to be printed and delivered and with instructions. And we had a phone conference with their cyber folks at Travelers. And it, it all related to a time when everybody got VPNs because they all started working from home. And there was an incident and Travelers forensics folks had found that incident and worked with the other, the company's IT folks to basically ratchet it down before a loss could occur. So the, the good thing that I'm seeing in cyber coverages, and not just with Travelers, is that they are, they are very proactive in helping keep fires from happening, if you will, within a, within a computer program, within a computer network. That may not give you everything you need.
Have you heard, do you have much background on what kind of dollar amounts have, have been paid out for individual occurrences in the cyber stuff?
You remember the Target loss?
Yeah.
Couple of years ago?
Yeah.
That loss occurred because they had, they had a third-party contractor doing heating and venting work. And somebody within that company manipulated thermostats to be able to access computer programs because they were all connected to the internet deal. I think that was over fifty million dollars.
What about Butler and Harvey County? They've been both breached. Do you know anything about those?
I do not. I didn't study up on those.
But our limit on those is a million dollars.
You're at a million dollars, yes. And then you have, most of the lines are at a million. There are a few lines down below that you can see that are, that are under that. Computer fraud is only ten thousand dollars. There are some new things too. So ransomware, the federal government came out with guidelines basically saying insurance companies should not, cannot. It's illegal to pay a foreign terrorist group for ransom. So we're, we're having to do some workarounds within the industry to figure out how we're going to deal with, with some of these events that have been common.
Mr. Fee, a couple of questions while you're, the, the rate to be charged to the county is significantly higher than last year. Am I reading this right that the value of buildings and courthouse and all has been raised somewhat?
Yeah, the values of the, the property, real property values are up five percent.
Okay.
So the rate of the, the rate is up about fifteen percent overall on the, on the property. It is up about thirteen percent on the auto line, but that, that's hard to account for because we did have, you have new cars that come on and cars that are taken off. We do it as a, as a group. And then the other, the bottom line kind of, Commissioner Sellers, is about eleven percent overall.
Yeah. Well, I'm pretty good at giving people a hard time when they come in here, but I, I want to look, have the commission to look at this chart that you prepared. Premium loss history for Reno County. That, to me, that shows why we're faced with some of these increases. Our history is just, I might, probably shouldn't say awful, but it's very bad.
You have a few things that are, are difficult. A jail and the jail of our size can be problematic when it comes to law enforcement legal. The sheriff's department, they've, they've got a lot going on. We have a large county to cover, a lot of miles to cover. And so there's, we've had some accidents that have occurred and some of them from the sheriff's office.
But this chart showing from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty, your loss ratio is eighty-five percent, that's, that's high.
That's high.
Yeah.
Is part of that due to the earthquake?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a million dollars in there from last year's earthquake.
We've done some, the sheriff has done some things to help cost on repairs. One thing is the, the new, I call it a hood ornament, so to speak, of the brush that is a lot stronger than used to be protecting as far as being able to, when they hit something and so forth. Is that, any of that ever figured into these things? Because the cost of putting a light in one is exorbitant anymore and that should help. I mean, little things. I'm just looking at little things.
Yeah, and they're really only factored in when you take a look backward at the loss history. So those little things, if you have an accident, also costs a lot more to repair and replace.
Randy, does the county have any type of loss prevention committee or any group that meets to look at these losses and see how some of them might be prevented?
None of the slum insurance.
What is your thoughts on that?
Well, we do, and unfortunately, and I don't believe Randy's been able to meet with the Travelers Loss Control individual.
From the company to the county, there is.
Correct, yes, there is. And he worked very closely with, with Gary before and was out here a couple of times a year. And we, I did reach out to him after we talked and he, he should be, I don't know if he has or not, but he should be reaching out.
Yes.
They've been constrained with their inability to travel as well.
Has Kansas Association of Counties offers many, as well as some others, offer many safety training and so forth? Is that the amount of safety training and so forth for, is that taken into effect anyway, anywhere in this, except just the loss? You know, the additional education on safety? Is there anything in, in, in the policy that will help reduce prices if they take safety courses and so forth? Is that all figured back into the loss?
It's all figured back in. Travelers website has hundreds of safety videos that can be used. And, and like I said, they've got, they've got their loss control folks that actually, when we were building the jail, they came out multiple times to help with. to help with what to look for in the jail construction and, and things like that. Those costs are actually built into the premium, so there's no, there's no real reduction of premium if you do those. They're loss preventative. And the, the whole point of loss prevention would be that you have better than an 85% loss ratio. You can't prevent earthquakes, and we can't prevent hailstorms. And we had a, we had a major lightning strike here a few years ago. You can't prevent some of this stuff. And that's one of the reasons why property rates in the Midwest have been pretty, have been pretty hard.
Are there other questions of Mr. Fee on this item? Well, I, I would encourage the county administrator to work with the insurance company's loss prevention people, because what I'm seeing here is a pretty bad history. Now, you're, you're saying about the lightning and you're saying about the earthquake, but as Forrest Gump once said, you know, the, uh...
Let's hear it.
No, I'm not going to go there. We need to be doing better, the county, from year to year on some of this stuff. Or we'll get to the point that we'll be hard-pressed to get covered. Correct?
You brought up the Kansas County Program. That, there, that's a program. The, the Midwest Public Risk Program is out there, and Travelers is out there. And the only other company really riding counties of this size is One Beacon. And we did reach out to One Beacon, and they were recently purchased by a, a foreign company. I don't remember who. But, but they didn't even, they got the submission and basically said, "We don't want to work on it."
Let's keep it, let's keep it in the nation.
It is a struggle, to your point. It's a struggle anyway. But I, I will tell you, Travelers is pretty committed to municipal business and, and have been in it a long time.
Is that just in our state a problem, or is it nationwide, that there's just no underwriters?
Public entity business is, it's more difficult to, to write, to plan for as an underwriting company. So it is, it's limited across the country, really, with the number of, of markets. There are a lot of pools. Midwest Public Risk is a pool. The K-Camp Pool is, is a pool. It's not real insurance. It's, it's a pool to approach, to sharing costs and sharing losses. But we see more of that for municipal business around the country than, than standard markets writing it.
I think for Commissioner Stefan, so we have, didn't we sign a three-year contract or something like that with you, basically? If I remember right, wasn't there something regarding that, or?
No, it, this is on an annual basis. We, we talked about it a few years ago. I think you, you remember that Bob Bush, I believe, had said, you know, "If this is not up more than 10%, we'll, we'll just kind of roll with it." But it is up more than 10% this year.
I know we had, had some conversations. I couldn't remember.
We, I wish we could lock you in for three years on certain lines.
So do we.
Yeah, I know.
But I, I was just trying to recall what we talked about.
Yeah, I think it was more of a general dialogue, because it's a one-year policy.
Okay. If there's no more questions of Mr. Fee, is there a motion to either approve or deny the 2021 insurance renewal?
I would move to approve the 2021 insurance renewal for property liability and auto coverage with Trailers, Travelers through Fee Insurance.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion by the commission? Not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Mr. Stefan?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Fee, for being here.
Merry Christmas.
Moving on to Item B, Kansas Rehabilitation Tax Credits. Randy, would you please present this?
Yes.
And fully explain how this works, because I've read it. I still not quite sure how these people use these credits, so.
Okay. The tax credits that Reno County received are a result of court, or the elevator projects that were completed last year, and at the end of 2019. The project was $160,896. The tax credit certificate is 25% of that that was given to the county, which is $40,224. I had mentioned in a previous meeting in my report that I'd go out to bid to sell these tax credits. I went to the Kansas State Historical Society. They have a list of interested parties that are interested in buying these tax credits. I sent out the list. And the three entities or individuals listed here are Scott Patterson out of Clay Center, Fallbrook Tax Credits, they're out of California, and First National Bank of Lewisburg. They each put in a bid, which were, all of them were very close, but Scott Patterson had the highest bid to buy the $40,224 for $36,500. And the way I understand it, Commissioner, is he buys those, we would transfer or sell those tax credits. He would give us the money, ACH the money to us. We fill out paperwork, the application, send it to the State Historical Society. They will then transfer the tax credits that he can use for income, income tax credits. So he's paying $36,500, but he gets credits of 40, a little over $40,000. That's, and then he would have to work with his tax professional, tax accountant, to, what year to use those on. Go back to 2019. I think they can be transferred over for, I believe, a few years. I forget the number, but he could probably use them in future years.
But he gets $40,000 of tax, of tax credit.
And he's paying $36,500 for those.
Okay.
Reno County has no use for them, and we can't use them. So that's why if we sell them for whichever amount, it's money into the county's budget.
Yes, I understand it. It's, it's interesting, but I'm not sure I want to discuss it. But he's paying 36 to get 40?
Yes.
And doing paperwork and that kind of stuff?
Yes.
We've used these before.
Well, I, I know that governments have, and, and 501(c)(3) people occasionally have state tax credits, I believe.
Yes, yes. And we'll have more, probably won't be next year, maybe the year after, when the courthouse projects, the weatherization, that work's done. We'll probably get tax credits for that also, that we can go back out to bid to sell.
Okay. Is there a motion to award these credits to Scott Patterson in a net amount of $36,200? I'll make that motion. Sounds like it's a fair deal to us. Is there a second?
I think it would be $36,500, and then on the back end yet, the net, we would take $300 off for the cost.
Understood. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Mr. Stefan?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Okay, County Administrator, report, please. What items do you have today, Randy?
The only item I have additionally, just to let you know that with the CARES Act money, with our consultants, the consultant agreement was originally through December 30th with Gary Meeger and John Deardoff. I've, we've extended that with the guidelines of the CARES Act. We can continue to use them into 2021. If we allocate, or I guess we encumber the money now. So Leslie's working on encumbering, I think, around $7,000 to carry over and would sign, have signed a contract extension with both Gary and John for the next couple of months, through February. They probably will only, they're guessing maybe 23 to 30 hours per individual to finish out the, the year-end, the final parts of CARES Act. So I'm just letting you know that. And that's all I have.
Okay, but I have a question regarding that. You mentioned casually to me that you feel like the federal government has extended the time that that money can be spent?
Yes. Commissioner Hearst had forwarded me an email that he had received from Senator Jerry Moran about the Congress, when they passed legislation. I believe it's in the most recent passing of their more CARES Act or their stimulus bill. It does extend the use of this CARES Act money through December of 2021 for Reno County. Most of it, if not all, has been spent, or will be spent through December 30th of this year, 2020. But if that is signed and made effective, that'll help out a good amount, probably for Leslie and some of our work, and at least one of the school districts as we continue to get delays of shipping for the products. So this will, the extension will help us fully spend all the money and document it.
Okay, thank you. Is that all the comments you have today?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearst, do you have comments today or reports?
Just, just the fact that I wanted to thank everybody who took their time out of their work schedule to send us emails and, and telephone calls on that tough decision we had to make.
Commissioner Stefan?
You know, I do think it's important that we have some of this stuff on the record, like we did today with the voting. And, and it's, it's kind of looking at the history of, of the, of the virus. The statewide cases, this is all off the Kansas Department of Health and Environment website, so it's, it's public record. You all can go look for yourselves. But the cases really began to take this a little bit of an upward trend in late June. The governor placed her statewide mask mandate just right after that, just right after that. The Reno County mask mandate went into effect on July the 14th. The China virus slowly built up steam under this mask mandate until October the 5th, when it really took off and skyrocketed up to 3,822 cases in a single day on November the 9th, and then began to start to drop. Reno County Health Order 20-04 was enacted on November the 18th, so after the peak and when the drop had already started. Monday statewide, the new cases came in at just 126 across the state. Statewide and on the county level, the, the response, the China virus response has always been a step behind. It was like our interim director said last week, "The virus is going to do what the virus wants to do." So as they chase this virus, they being the Kelly Administration, our Health Department, the Hutch Chamber, and even our hospital with their media campaign, what they forget is the trail of collateral damage that they leave, that's left in the wake of the response. And again, the commission overlooked that today, and that's unfortunate. And, and one last tidbit of information everybody needs to be aware of, that kind of came in my radar, radar screen this past week. You do look at the cases in, in Florida, Texas, Oklahoma, and Kansas. And it turns out right now, the cases per 100,000 in Oklahoma and Kansas are basically the exact same. Cases, number cases per 100,000. But our deaths per 100,000 are more than twice what you see in Oklahoma. Our deaths in Kansas are more than twice what you see in Oklahoma. And even three times what you see in Florida and Texas. And there's very few reasons, explanations for that, that they need to be looked at. Because sitting here on our hands, hearing about outpatient treatments that aren't being done when they are available in Oklahoma, and we have a death rate twice of what they have, we got a problem. And, and maybe we don't, but it needs explained. Why Kansas has a death rate twice that of Oklahoma and three times that of Texas and Florida. Something to think about. Lastly, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Hearst, you put this in my mind. Every time you guys are out there in public with your mask on, and you're touching it, putting it on, putting it off, and you believe with all your heart, it's a filter for this virus, and it's catching that virus, and you're touching it, think about how you're smearing that all over the place. Think about it. Think about where you're touching after you take that mask off every time you put it on and you put it off. You think about where you're seeding that virus. And we'll just continue this discussion. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Stefan. I don't believe I have any remarks, and we'll adjourn until after Christmas. Thank you.